Folks, item number seven is been made by unanimous consent and there are copies of the item up here in the floor count.
Good evening everyone and folks from November 19th meeting. At this time we have a special proclamation. We'll ask the council to at this time come down that we can send. Well, good evening everyone. We are pleased tonight to extend this proclamation appreciation to the legal women voters of New York State. We just celebrate them by giving them a hand this evening. Once again advocacy and education and awareness is critical to us as we continue to represent the ideals of democracy. And so tonight we have the city council, we are pleased and proud to present this proclamation and its sake. Whereas the city of Long Beach wishes to recognize those who are committed to the betterment of the city and the lives of our residents. And whereas the city of Long Beach does desire to publicly acknowledge the legal women voters of New York State in recognition of their centennial anniversary. And whereas founded on November 19th, 1919, the legal women voters of New York State have worked with the community to promote equal rights for women and was vital and helpful to pass the 19th amendment to the US Constitution which gave women the right to vote. And whereas the legal women voters of New York State has been working with the community for many generations of Americans to promote access and voting rights for people of all backgrounds. And now and therefore the city council and the city manager of the city of Long Beach recognition of the 100 years of exemplary service for the community proudly present this proclamation to the Long Beach again legal women voters of New York State. And we're so happy that we have all of those who are representing the city of Long Beach today. We have Ivan Willie who's our president and also our deputy who is our vice president. First vice president, sorry. First vice president. And so we celebrate you today. We thank you for your advocacy. But also we celebrate the fact this 19th amendment has transformed our country and we're so happy to be a part of this unique and honorable occasion. We are celebrating the fact that women's rights has changed the rights for so many others within our country. And we're happy to celebrate this extreme honor to be. With this we say thank you and congratulations. We're going to ask the council at this time if we can come together and we can take a photo of this occasion. We have one more announcement today. We're going to ask 215 Dave to come forward at this time so that we can give you a proclamation. Let's celebrate all of our Eagle Scouts that are also with us this evening. As we wait for the proclamation, at this time we would ask Dave Sinesero if he would speak on behalf of the group.
Hello, I'm Nathan Sutcliffe, what's happening? And my Eagle Scout project was to replace the old worn, you know, broken down chalkboards at the Moby playground. In addition to that, we refurbished the plaques at the playground and repainted the town building. And we started this project in the fall of last year, but due to the weather, we had to paint and spray for the following year, which was this year. And yeah, we got the project completed in no time.
Okay, this is once again, let's use pause to just really celebrate what this young man and his group were able to accomplish. This is amazing work and as always, we always celebrate when we see our young people coming to City Hall to share all their accomplishments and their hard work. We are extremely proud. But before that, we want to ask our scout master if you could say a few words please?
Well, Dana's been receiving a lot of recognition the last couple of weeks. I'm not saying that's going to make his head so big it's going to explode. But Dana, finding out in a lot of rooms like these, it's very difficult to get everyone to agree on anything. But I think maybe in this moment, we've all kind of agreed, your accomplishment is worthy of the recognition you receive.
So we're not going to hear from our Eagle Scouts this evening, but we are going to celebrate those who are here. We'll ask that the council will come, we want to get a picture up top and the proclamation is on its way.
Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the council of the City Hall meeting on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. One local, excuse me, Councilmember Donovan Zax, Councilmember Arama, Councilmember Mendez, Vice President Mendez.
President.
President Charles.
Here.
The President Keith, President of Acting City Manager John Moreno, and Acting Corporation Council Frank Calvissi, and now Speaker De La.
And Councilman Mendez will be up at this time?
To the right, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we'll have a report from Assistant Acting City Manager John Moreno.
At approximately 10:30 today, Commissioner Taggman called informing that a will of a Kareem Moore veteran at the theater police headquarters seeking assistance on how to dispose of two mortar shells that belong to a laygun. To be on the safe side, Commissioner Taggman has police supply department headquarters evacuated. However, based on location of the mortar shells, we saw no reason to evacuate City Hall. At 10:45, the mortar shells were safely removed by the Nashville County armed squad. And later we got a report from the Nashville County armed squad that both, I was going to move over there and not, not armed at all. That had been briefly verified by one of our detectives who had some training in the area. City of Long Beach in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, MLK Center, and the Long Beach Superstar are working together to make Thanksgiving special for those in need. For now until November 25th, we will collect the goods such as boxing hands goods. More information please sit by in front of the room. Meet the manager, an opportunity to meet with me without an appointment initially was taking place on Mondays from 2:00 to 4:00. Building on the success of the first few weeks of the meetings, I am also asking my, making myself available from 4:30 to 6:30 on the third Tuesday of each month prior to the city council meeting. Meet with the manager takes place in the city manager's office on the fifth floor of City Hall. This year's Small Business Saturday will fall on November 3rd. Of the nearly 60% of US consumers reported knowing about Small Business Saturday, 80% said they'd like to shop at independent retailers that day. Remember, big box stores and nail warehouses do not help support our local programs. For more information on other programs, please go to www.bigcommerce.com\blog\small-business-saturday. The current art show at the City Hall's gallery is Humans of Long Beach, orchestrated by local artists. It's up until the end of the month and available to view when City Hall is open. The Arts Council is working on an expanded program in the Recreation Department's first night event on December 31st at the ICE Arena. Art programs and music will be given to children up to middle school age paid in funds from the New York State Public Fund. The City of Long Beach Police Department has won Gold Award in AAA Northeast Community Traffic Safety Awards Program. The city also received a special citation for having a full year with zero pedestrian fatalities. The city was cited for as many traffic safety efforts including conducting enhanced DWI enforcement. More officers have been trained in ARIDE, Advanced Roadside and Care Driving Enforcement, and as breath technicians to combat the problem of drunk and drunk driving. The special DWI handoff program allows trained officers to get back on the street more quickly to continue looking for additional offenders. The city also conducts numerous child class C checks and participates in bicycle safety initiatives. Initiative, all crucial to bicycle heavy community. Keeping the roadway safe for all is a top priority for Long Beach. The deadline to file property tax exemption applications, both new and for immunity, is December 2nd. These exemptions are strictly for the city of Long Beach and do not apply to Nashville County or Long Beach School District. Those who need to apply for separately. If you would like to file an exemption, please visit longbeach.gov/paxassessor, call 431-1009. The city's public works groups will continue flushing hydrants through tomorrow between the end, between hours of 9:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. And for more information on hydrant flushing, you go to the website www.wonbeachny.com-publicworks.
Thank you. Now, Watson, you jump.
First item this evening is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to accept funds from the New York City District where this compensation lies.
This is the housekeeping item from last meeting. We accepted a check of $46,000 and we need to now accept that check.
Are there any questions from the members of the council? Okay, at this time are there any questions from members of the public? You were here last time. Many of you were here when we accepted the donation during that meeting. Are there any questions? Do you think some people want to add too?
I'm sure there's a resolution authorizing settlement of social security proceeds.
We asked our tax assessor to come up and review this. Hi, good evening. This is the tax assessor settlement, a proposed tax assessor settlement for the management insurance company office building at 370 West Park. It funds five years of taxes, partial taxes, and freezes the assessment moving forward for the 60,000 dollar settlement, which requires the city council approval.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
If we take the $60,000 settlement and allocate it out over the five year period, they're effectively getting about a 21% tax reduction of their city taxes. And then from the 18, 19 year to the 19, 20 year, they get another almost 8%. How does that, how did that settle?
It's on the building. It's unique to Long Beach. It's over 40,000 square feet. You're all comparable office buildings. Closest one to the Bloomberg Valley Street or around Nashville County House. This property does not have a parking lot, which is a detriment to value. And the office space is in non-honed classified, so when the equalization rate changes from year to year based on the state of the situation. It's one of the most powerful buildings and condos, homes, which have, well, not the value of the past second year as well. The office rent is relatively flat and on a general account. So without an annual revaluation, with the equalization change, you can show the most office or retail space in the city.
Okay, so and I realize this is counting on us, but they're actually paying less in school taxes now by 21% than they were in 2011. And their county taxes have been flat, so they're really not paying, they didn't, basically not paying anything more for nine years now.
The teacher said recently they had a settlement with the county which valued at about 3.9 million. My settlement springed value down to about 5.3 million. So we have a value higher than what the county just settled with that.
Okay, I guess the point I'm getting at is they're paying a flat rate each year. They're really not going up at all. So that's, the increase is getting distributed among everyone else basically, right? I mean, I guess it's because people don't believe, but.
With that, that's part of the process of tax assessor assessments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from members of the council? Seeing none at this time, we'll open the floor to members of the public. Are there any questions? Yes. Ms. Leary?
Hi, Catherine Leary, Long Beach. I know that Lancer Insurance has been a very good neighbor for a very long time. I have two questions. Why is there to prevent any other retail store to request the same type of tax rate? And also because we're comparing it to housing actually this quarter. And then the other question is why is it only limited to 2021, 22 tax years? Should, and you say it froze the assessment. Does that mean it can't be lowered anymore? Or can they do this again in two years?
Pretty much most commercial properties do follow grievances in Article 7 and E proceedings in the street court. So, and large presented potential properties also follow grievances with that city. But as far as the three-year assessment fees, they also can't follow grievance at statutory. So anytime there's a warrant, an assessment through the Article 7 process, it's a three-year freeze on assessment. And they're not allowed to follow grievances for that.
It's not technically a tax rate. It's about the fair valuation of how much the property is worth. So this goes back a few years because they grieved it in those years. This is the settlement the tax assessor was aiming to reach based on what he believes to be a fair valuation of the property.
So any more to review this?
Everybody.
Property owners, not the actual merchants.
Just one quick question. For the years it's frozen, plus that's lifted, they can't go back and retroactively seek adjustments for the previous decade?
No, they can't.
Can I hear the questions regarding the assignment? Yes, Ms. Bolson.
Mary Malice, Long Beach.
Is this just?
Ladies in my headphone, we can't hear. Um, Mary Malice, Long Beach. Is this just for the office building that we're discussing the taxes? Or is this including the parking lot with the dilapidated door?
Just the office building.
And what, is that, do they pay, they pay the regular taxes on that parking lot, whatever?
They do pay taxes.
And then I agree with you.
They are, I'm assuming they do a hazard assessment.
Okay, are there any other questions with respect to item number two? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number three.
And agrees with resolution authorizing the acting city manager to purchase dispatch equipment to the city's office of emergency management through HDAC by National Patrol.
Again, this is equipment that we're purchasing under a grant, a community grant for putting the office of emergency management in operation. They expand on the type of equipment that we're purchasing.
Yes, this is for a, to answer that, a fourth position dispatch on site into the OEM that will allow us to use the city's radio systems from, from the OEM, same as we do in the police fire dispatch locations.
All right, are there any other questions from members of the council?
I'm bringing it.
At this time, members of the public, Mr. Gussel?
I'm sorry, is that for yet?
Yes.
Um, I just, my memory failed me. Mr. Martin, what the grant amount the city got for this OEM office was?
The total grant that was, there was a grant from Senator Kaminsky's office, the total, all the amount that was made to use OEM was $185,000.
So we got $185,000 total? Or were there other grants from other sources?
$185,000 for equipment total in the OEM, just for equipment in the OEM, so other grants for equipment.
Okay, just the equipment. What about the grant that we got for the facility to create the facility itself?
That was from the, it was also storm recovery.
And it was in what amount?
It was, I think the nylon price was about 1.6 million.
Possibly 1.1 million.
Yeah.
So $18 million did not include any equipment?
It was the, without going to include an obstruction lower, considering the generator equipment.
And to this juncture that's?
And the manly.
I'm sorry, I got you. At this juncture, this $35,000 and change is the city's sole out-of-pocket expense related to this?
It's not, this is not out-of-pocket expense for the city. This is being charged, that grant $185,000.
Okay.
There's several items that are being charged.
This is a charge against the grant fund.
Correct.
Okay. Will there be any city share or city out-of-pocket associated with the establishment of the OEM?
No, I think we have enough to get all the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions with respect to item number three? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to renew the contract for asphalt concrete, or needed at various locations throughout the city.
Basically, this is a housekeeping item. We have completed $654,000 of overlay on a requirements contract. When we put the requirements contract out the resolution last time, we had asked for $400,000 based on the previous year's capital budget. This year we have additional $400,000 in capital budget. So this is just to authorize the additional work that we did to complete the $654,930.
Okay, at this time are there any questions from members of the council?
So you said this was already budgeted point, so?
It's already budgeted.
That services, at that time we awarded the contract to work, work ahead. We had $400,000. So we only awarded it for that, but so we needed to catch up.
And no other questions, we'll open the floor up to members of the public, item number four. Anyone have any questions with respect to item number four? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five.
And in the form of a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to renew the application service provider agreement for the city's community system.
Now we'll turn this over to our experts upon the unit system, Dave.
The unit system is basically our city mechanic system. It's a hosted system from Tyler Technologies. We contract out of it on a yearly basis, so this is the contract for the next year's work of service.
All right, at this time we'll ask the council if they have any questions?
How much do we, roughly pay that each year? Is it basically staying about the same?
Yeah, this is the same flat we've all been paying for the last three years.
And then just?
We are looking to negotiate, sorry, next year we are going to have to negotiate a new contract. I don't know what the probably we're looking for this, sorry, next year.
So this might hold in this question then. How will the efforts on the way to potentially put finances online? Will units be able to facilitate that or work with whatever software we need to?
Right now we're looking at two different products that integrate with the units.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, at this time we'll ask the members of the public to speak to item number five. Are there any questions? Mr. Leslie?
Good evening, Roy Leslie. On the last meeting when we voted to approve the software for the tax assessor, that was with a different company and we talked about other companies that did it. What's Tyler, I mean, why is that the impact assessment for Tyler Technologies? Yes, and like we said, we don't want to use them because they're too expensive and because, well, other companies' years were basically was too expensive. And yet Tyler Systems would have been able to, you know, the software, whether it's a software consulting associates are deprived of it. And they can't mix with our other softwares. And we talked about Tyler and you guys didn't like Tyler for that. Why doesn't it make sense to not have one vendor, a large vendor handling our software?
Um, well, Tyler doesn't have products that handle everything that SCA does. For example, one of the things that isn't seen across and we have this from software consulting is the course package. And that does also buy the records and so Tyler is not allowed.
Yes.
That's one reason.
Yes.
The other reason, yeah, is Tyler as far as for assessment is a lot more expensive than SCA. And with the SCA product, we've had a lot more input into the design of it with some of the. With, uh, with some of the, some of the newer Tyler products, it's kind of, um, it is what it is. Um, we've been, I, I should say, as far as the financial software, we've been using the Tyler product, well, since before it was even Tyler, since it was before it was a computer system. Uh, we've been using it since the early nineties.
Right, but you said last time it hadn't been upgraded for, I think, twenty-one years. And, uh?
That's just, just the assessment piece of it.
Yes.
This, this is, yeah, this is completely different software.
What?
This is completely different software.
Right, but doesn't, doesn't National County use Tyler?
A completely different product. Tyler's a very good company. They take over a lot of different companies and they use, I believe, a completely different product than, than the units. They don't, they don't use them. I don't believe they use the unit's product.
Okay, so they, but if they, if National County uses them, they must have the product to handle Long Beach.
On, for which, for, for the assessment, or are you talking about?
Well, you just said, one of the problems with Tyler is it doesn't handle, doesn't have capability to handle.
Well, for, for certain things. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about for the course, for my, for my office, I know they don't have a product that, that, and it's mine, it's mine business. That's one of the pieces of software that we use from S C A, or the units we, that we use from S C A.
All right, once again, I'm going to echo what I said last time. Where, I guess if our team can get proprietary software from small companies, when we are using a big company for other parts of our software, and the software that you emit will not correlate with our other software. So, yes, you know me, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dussel?
Uh, good evening, Jay Dussel. Um, I'm just looking for an understanding of what UNIS is, uh, able to, uh, glean from the resolution. Uh, this is a program that is utilized by payroll and civil service department. I'm sorry, purchasing and civil service department to manage the city's payroll and I assume purchasing, um?
It's financial.
Okay. And how, and outside agencies other than payroll and, um, purchasing, uh, interface with this, uh, software?
I'm sorry, with, with?
So, I'm, what, I have payroll and I have purchasing needs and, uh, at some point, those, uh, payroll purchasing needs, um, become, um, data, I guess, for lack of a better term, that is, uh, part of the UNIS system. Is that ultimately what happens?
More or less, yeah.
Okay, so, so, but how, how does that happen? In other words, is there, is the person in charge of order department able to sit at the terminal in their office? I'm just picking the order department, you know, I have this guy. All right, so they have to turn in something and then there's some centralized, um, uh, office that inputs that information to the UNIS system?
In, or in the case of payroll or in case of purchasing, yeah, they turn it to respective departments. Then those departments would process payroll or purchase order or whatever, whatever it may be.
And that information that is, that is gathered from the outside agencies of the other city departments, is that paper form, what form is it in?
Usually it's in paper, for most examples of, for, for payroll or for purchasing. So we are, we are working on, uh, moving those to a electronic.
So a given department head, right, let's say the head of youth and family services, couldn't go out and just buy on their own or obtain on their own a, uh, commercial, uh, payroll or a commercial, uh, accounting system, like Quicken? And, and rely on that and, and rely on that and not, um, the traditional paper methods that are relied upon whatever agencies?
It depends on the scope of what you're talking about. We have used, um, smaller packages like QuickBooks. I think we did it at one point. We might still be using QuickBooks just to do one portion of the job, um, for that. But for, for, for most of our, for, for purchasing payroll and for our general ledger, that's done here in-house by the, by the controllers office or the payroll department or by the personnel.
So regarding to the way in which they manage their information, it's ultimately folded into the, uh, UNIS system?
More or less, yeah.
Are there any other questions with respect to item number five? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to renew the general fund budget for the two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year.
Okay, I believe at this time we'll ask, uh, economic development, which is a warrant, to come forward and speak to item number six.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When the city created the Arts Council, the expectation was that with the help of the volunteer board and the part-time director, they would leverage funds and proceed to look for additional funds. And tonight, we're looking at, uh, some of the funds that were raised in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen by the Arts Council to move to the fiscal year two thousand twenty, the current year. And these comprise four thousand five dollars. And the details are that of that amount, twenty-five hundred, was a grant from New York State Council for the Arts through the Huntington Arts Council. And, um, the other amount was raised by the board and staff through donations, sponsorships, and memberships, which totals four thousand five hundred. And right now, the, um, board and the director, with my support, are currently working on three additional grants and, and two of them are with outside agencies to find additional funds to support the arts in Long Beach. And I just, if I may mention, we have a terrific board and we have three members here to support tonight's action. We have the President Ed Kennedy, the, the Treasurer, George Trepp, and the Secretary, Wendy Goldstein.
Good, thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
I just wanted to clarify, these are all funds that were reused for donations?
Yes.
The members of the council?
Yes, they're non-tax money, non-city tax funds at all.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask if there are any comments and or questions with respect to item number six from members of the public. If seeing none, we want to begin, uh, recognizing members of the Arts Council that are here and we thank you for your work. We want to ask seven.
Okay, item seven has been handed by unanimous consent. It is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to accept a donation from the Harvey and Ellen Wiesenberg Special Needs Resource Corps and scrutiny, uh, I'm sorry, and Cert for All slash scrutiny service.
So you did, uh, this past week, Joe Fabrizio and Tom Cannon and myself met with Liz Treston to try to lay out some ramps that were ADA compliant so that, uh, we could have access to the dais. Um, it became very complicated based on the distances we needed for the ramps. Uh, Liz Treston suggested that she would get a donation to put a lift in, which would make it a lot simpler to, uh, to reshape the, uh, the dais to, uh, to be able to get, uh, somebody in a wheelchair up onto the dais. Uh, who was laying out, who was able to get, uh, a donation for the lift. Uh, and our P trainees people will install it. We already have a plan on how to fit it in and, uh, we'll, you know, make this dais accessible. So we need to accept the funds or accept action with itself.
Okay, any questions from members of the council? We are all extremely pleased and happy that we can move forward with this effort at this time.
Uh, will city staff be installing, the installation?
Yes, and we'll be able to do this done by January first, so.
All right, are there any questions or comments from members of the public with respect to item number seven? Any questions at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move on.
Item one is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to accept funds from the New York State Municipal Workers' Compensation.
I will.
I will.
Roy, has a member of the law?
Yes.
Has a member of the law?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Item two is a resolution authorizing settlement of sociability procedure. Should we move to option B seven?
Second?
I will.
Roy, has a member of the law?
Yes.
Has a member of the law?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And three is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to purchase dispatch equipment for the city's Office of Emergency Management through H G A C by a national program.
I will.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And four is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to renew the contract for asphalt overlay work needed at various locations throughout the city.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And five is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to renew the application service provider agreement for the city's municipal system.
Yes, I will.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And six is a resolution authorizing the project manager to renew the general fund budget for the two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year.
Roy, has a member of the law?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to accept a donation from the Harvey and Ellen Wiesenberg Special Needs Resource Corps and Cert for All slash scrutiny service.
I will.
I'd just like to thank the, uh, Honorable Harvey Wiesenberg and the scrutiny service for the generous donation. Um, I go yes.
I echo what the council member Ronald said, thank you very much. This was a great year for the city and I vote yes.
The board has said, I want to echo both, what both of us, my fellow colleagues have said. We thank Honorable Wiesenberg along with, uh, the Cert for All, but we also thank the entire community for working together to make sure that each maintenance, uh, area would be able to make this happen. And this is really a team effort, um, as we all unite to do something that's so wonderful. So again, with that, I vote yes.
And at this time, uh, before we leave, if you are not going to be here at the end of the meeting, I just want to say on behalf of the City Council that we wish you and your families a healthy and happy Thanksgiving. Is that a vote yes? At this time, we want to move to the good and well-kept portion of our meeting. One more way, at this time, we'll hear from Sam Pinto.
Got a question? Good evening. Good evening, Sam Pinto. Uh, tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Army professional firefighters, uh, speaking on a topic that I believe will be addressed by multiple speakers in the crowd tonight. Uh, I was approached about a, uh, an art project, um, was for a boat dock area, Magnolia Boulevard, with local, uh, boat access areas off the pier. Uh, I was shown it and I thought it was a great idea. Um, but speaking specifically on behalf of safety, uh, part of it was to include, uh, access for our police, fire, and even coast guard. Um, I think that's a great idea, being in the middle of town, our police and fire headquarters are a vet center in town, have quick access within larger areas, uh, to access the bay. Uh, would greatly benefit the city and benefit safety. Uh, so speaking just to the safety aspect of it, I do think it's a great idea. And I hope the council and the, uh, group vendor can move forward with something like this. Um, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, very well said. Okay. That is Kelly. Good evening.
Good evening. That is Kelly, twenty twenty West Park Avenue, suite three eleven, Long Beach, New York, five six twenty. I'd ask the city clerk to hand each of you a grouping of documents. You can take one of, uh, of the top and then, uh, one of the bigger ones on the bottom. I appreciate that. Uh, I'd ask you to forgive me. I'm very worried usually, we would like to engage document. Uh, but for this few minutes, I'm just gonna read my statement to make sure I get, uh, a good use of my few minutes. I represent Sunset Bay Ventures and Winter Sports L B N Y A. I've come to ask you, each of you, or any one of you, to place on the agenda for the December third meeting, a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Sunset to provide operation of bay front water services pursuant to the documents I've just submitted to you. In the packets that you, uh, just received, you'll find a letter from Assemblywoman Melissa Miller in support of the project. Uh, I also happen to know that Todd, Senator Todd Kaminsky has submitted a letter to the city manager in support of the project. If you haven't already received from Legislative Denise Ford a letter in support, it will be shortly. I have included as well in the packet, a letter in support from the Chamber of Commerce. I've also submitted photographs of the current condition of the city's boat launch on the channel, which is just, uh, just each, uh, east of, uh, the wreck sector. I've also submitted for your perusal, and some of you may have seen them before, the initial request for proposal dated April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, the proposal submitted by Sunset dated April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, as well as the second request for proposal dated May fifth, two thousand sixteen, and the proposal to that R F P dated May fifth, two thousand sixteen. Uh, Sunset is installed better than both R F Ps. I've also submitted a survey, that was a smaller packet, a survey conducted by the city, uh, relative to offering, uh, waterfront, uh, services to the residents of the city, uh, which got overwhelming support in that particular survey. In close, you'll also find, and this is, this is significant, uh, permits from the Town and Penstap, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the U S Army Corps of Engineers. And you'll also see a letter from the City of Long Beach dated March third first, two thousand sixteen, authorizing, uh, Sunset to build the dock. Uh, I'd like to bring your attention to the fact that the U S Army Corps of Engineer permit is set to expire April twenty eighth, twenty twenty. All these permits authorizing, permit Sunset to build the dock. Sunset respectfully requests that you place this on the agenda for, uh, a vote in December to avoid the expiration of that permit. Uh, the city should take advantage of this opportunity. And just a last comment, the, the city has for decades sought to increase, uh, access to the channel by the public, uh, because of funding and politics and whatnot, it just hasn't happened. This would be an icebreaker. This would be an opportunity, uh, to do just that by private entity. The city will make money from, from the services and the residents will benefit from it. Thank you for your time, there's a couple of other people, but we'll speak on this topic as well.
Thank you. This is the beautiful Penn Nugent.
Good evening.
Good evening, Penn Nugent. I'm the president of Sunset Bay. Uh, I'm also the president and operator, owner-operator of Nugent Marine, based out of Three Fork. Um, I have thirty years' experience in the marine. Um, I have thirty years' experience in the marine construction industry. Uh, just want to give you a little rundown of the sort of the project of Viola. This is a project that we're taking on ourselves, not looking for any grants or any kind of money coming from the city. Um, we're looking to install approximately three hundred foot of floating docks. Um, they're going in the water between Bay and be taken away from the, the area in October. Um, just to give you an idea of the size that we're dealing with, uh, we're looking to put three hundred feet worth of floating. The, the bulkhead there in that area is fifteen hundred feet, so that's less than a quarter of that area taking up the floating docks. Um, we spent a substantial amount of money so far, and we're just starting to get this thing on the agenda for some answers. Um, I don't think we're, you know, we're asking for too much here. Um, we put a lot of time and effort into this, uh, a lot of thought has gone into this, and, uh, we're just here for some answers and, you know, trying to get this thing on the agenda.
We thank you for your time and we want to do everything that we can to get you some answers.
Thank you.
All right, at this time we'll hear from Ryan Braddish.
My name is Ryan Braddish, uh, join of Sunset Bay Ventures. We had four permits following the TDC, Town of Hempstead, Army Corps, and even commission of the City of Long Beach.
Talk into the microphone. Okay, can you just speak into the microphone a little bit because they can't hear you? Just move in a little bit, thank you.
We were sold there on two bids, um, in the city. We are interested in a few things we're going to do down there, looking to have fishing clinics for kids, stand up paddleboards, and kayak rentals, whale watching tours, seal watching tours. Uh, my partner will be far out in the water taxi, he'll come in by the seasonal water taxi business down there. We would have a small municipal marina for the residents, they would provide jobs. Once again, this is a self-financing project, probably costing about quarter million dollars. It's a revenue-driven project, I think the city just needs to do something on the waterfront. And hopefully council will get on board to develop this. Um, we're looking to get this on the agenda as soon as possible. I think it will be a start moment to be able to do something on the waterfront in Long Beach. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right, at this time we'll hear from Kathleen O'Leary.
Um, I consent to each of you a copy reflecting what I said at the, uh, email, reflecting what I said at the last meeting, that if the permanent city manager isn't, uh, appointed by the person here, that, uh, and a resolution to elected mayor should be added to the agenda for the city council meeting in, uh, twenty twenty. Um, the other thing I wanted to speak about is the pigback from, uh, Councilor, um, Agnosti, um, from Estes, Estes again. Um, I find it particularly evil for lack of any other work that, um, Mr. Schneierman based his acceptance on an overpayment on Mr. Agostini's advice and vice versa. Uh, Schneierman wrote him, um, a pass to take more money than he should have gotten. Now, I know he made a claim that he offered to pay the city back for the money he took too much of, but it sounds like the city didn't accept that money back. So my question is, um, did he pay it back yet and where did it go to? Are we setting up a fund where these pullbacks are going through? And I'm a little bit confused as to whether he actually did pay back the money before he left.
If anyone wants to speak to this matter?
The matter is under investigation by multiple agencies, so in that respect, I'd have to advise any city officials on to comment on it, you know, uh, every, let itself, you know, let, let, let the law sort itself out and, uh, we'll take it from there. Sorry, I can't give you a one minute right now.
Okay, no, we all know that. And, and he did make a statement that he did try to get that money and the chances of the city will take it. So are you saying there's pretty low contrast since he's left?
I'm, I'm saying can't, city can't help.
Okay, Moore Lester.
Two weeks ago, you lost in an election. Since that time, you've conducted yourself with such dignity and heart, I, I just, I'm very proud of you. I might not have been a fan, but. And I just, you know what? Sometimes I don't say nice things and I felt it.
Sometimes? I had to say.
Come on! But I, I just felt it had to be said because I'm just very surprised and happy. Thank you.
Thank you. James Haugh.
James Haugh here in this beautiful, amazing city of Long Beach, ninety five East Fulton Street. Uh, first of all, I would like to just say, uh, thank all the city council members, uh, invite all the city council, invite all city council members to our Thanksgiving dinner. Also, I would just like to, uh, thank the city for partnering with us, uh, the Monmouth King Center in, um, the drive. Uh, and I just want to speak in my, uh, private citizen capacity and say that I would also like to thank the second dad to me, Harvey Weizenberg and Cliff, and what they did in the donation. I think that they live, should have been, this should have been accessible before, uh, uh, Ms. Lives won the election. I just think it should have been accessible before then, but thank them for giving the donation and thank C S E A for doing it. And, uh, I would like to thank, uh, C S E A again for, uh, my main purpose is here to support the Sunset, uh, project. Uh, I sat down with Mr. Braddish and I will say that everything that I've heard, and still looking for more information and whatever information I can, but everything that I heard was nothing but, uh, revenue for the city of Long Beach and also, uh, we're, we're looking for more revenue income, uh, any way we can, uh, as, uh, as a city, so we don't have to raise taxes. I think, uh, I mean, I've been knowing him my whole life and, uh, his business has always helped the community. Uh, he's always had a very diverse staff. Uh, he has always financially supported, and not just financially supported, but supported with, uh, items to, uh, the community and, uh, any way I can, well, any way he can. So I'm here to support someone that I know, uh, that the proof is in the pudding. I, I mean, it's not sugarcoating it. He has been very supportive, so if this is something that he would do, I, as a resident and, uh, a person here in Long Beach for many years, seeing many people have businesses that never even thought about coming into the community to hire people and give so much that he gives. And so I am here totally to support this, uh, way of being able to get more revenue for the city, because I think he's a good businessman, I think he's a good person, I think he has a good family. His father started me all many years at fourteen, and I recognize his brother, the homecoming king, I won, but, uh, but I, and his mom is a great baker. Uh, so, they're, they're a good family and I thank him. Also, I would like to say that I thank you for being, uh, uh, che, uh, President, uh, Moore, I thank you for being, uh, who you are even before you lost the election, not just these last two weeks. So I didn't clap for that and everybody's entitled to say what they say, but thank you for being a respectful person and who you are even before the election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. You already got this letter in your package, so I think I'll just read it, save you some time. The Board of Long Beach Chamber of Commerce is happy to provide this letter of support for a floating dock and water taxi proposal on Reynolds Channel. The Jasons, the face park involved in the hand of like, like, reliable vote for West Coast Drive in Long Beach. We believe the project will offer numerous benefits to the surrounding communities by providing residents with a water taxi service connecting them to many local businesses and attractions along the waterway, while also serving as a rescue dock for the merchants and spot investors. Excuse me. In light of the recent successes of the ferry service to and from Far Off Way, which now brings visitors to seaport ports in New York City, which also led to river cruises going far, Hudson ships, this venture gives Long Beach a longer view opportunity to become our own seaport and hub, to connect Far Off Way to businesses there and drop there to our own port, while also making us a possible seaport tourist hub on the South Shore of there to bring visitors and commerce, excuse me, excuse me, to and from points along the shore, including Isle Park, East Rockaway, Oceanside Freeport, and other points east. Members of the business community have also voiced to us their support for this project and they will bring economic growth to Long Beach for some reason. So I urge you to put this on the agenda. I'm not quite sure why it hasn't been already included. Thank you.
Thank you. So good to see the Chamber of Commerce members presented here this evening. Ivan Hesse.
I need to have your full speech. Uh, last year this time, you voted to spend fifteen thousand dollars on the Christmas lights, so I'm just wondering if those were purchased and if they can go up and if they can be checked before they go up. I know last year some of them were put up, broken.
Beach Man's is in the middle of putting them up. They've been out there every day with the lights up. Uh, we just rented the truck so we could do all the water lights in the street, uh, lights, so they're in progress, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Jay Ursula.
Hi, good evening, Ian Jay Ursula. Um, in no particular order, um, as regards this proposed, uh, development slash dock complex in the Bayfront, um, I think it would be a big mistake for the city to allow this opportunity to slip through its fingers, uh, as we're all aware, the city is in dire financial straits. Uh, I think we need to look at every opportunity to generate revenue, uh, to hopefully offset the burden on the taxpayers. I think it'd be irresponsible if we didn't exploit this opportunity, which carries no taxpayer, uh, costs. Uh, with the proposed to the county of both the city and Bay Park, uh, Sewer Street facility discharging their effluent into Reynolds Channel, we can anticipate a dramatic improvement in the, uh, quality of our water in the Bayfront, and that will hopefully improve fishing, uh, swimming, swimability, uh, and other aspects of Bay. Uh, and I think this proposal would enable the city, uh, its residents and visitors to avail themselves of, uh, much more of the recreational opportunity that our Bayfront has to offer without them to go over the bridge in order to, uh, enjoy those opportunities. Uh, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I saw the city manager's personality board on Facebook and, uh, it struck, uh, a chord in my mind that there was a, for lack of a better term, a moratorium issued by council on personnel moves, uh, back in June, and I saw it and I reported it to me, the numerous promotions, grade change, and hires, and I was looking for an explanation of those promotions, grade changes, and hires if, uh, if you could. Uh, also, I want to comment on, uh, how Happy City has hired Ingramman Smith, Kansas City's amended response to the New York State Control of Grab Audit. Uh, but as we know, the city lost precious time by waiting as long as it did to pull the trigger on that hire. Uh, it was explained at the time that the city kept on hiring Ingramman because of Ingramman's lack of municipal law experience, but the city had now, uh, reversed course and hired him, and I would like to know what, if anything, caused that to happen.
I'd like to speak to that. There were two other, um, law firms that were considered. Um, one, uh, during conversations with other members of the council decided not to take this case. Uh, there was another, and I was on that, that phone conference with my other colleagues with respect to the second one, um, and we found that they were, they didn't see that they really wanted to take the case and also the cost was extremely high, did not want to, um, again, extend additional costs to our taxpayers, and then in light of the, the time constraint, we then moved forward with, with the Ingramman Smith. That's, there's really no story to it, um, that's really what happened. We did want to look at other companies, we did, and when that was done, we had to, um, we had to revert back to the initial comfortable. But we can get back to the personnel question, I think we had, can anyone speak to that issue?
Yes, I can. Uh, first of all, we have positions that need to be filled, and when I became city manager, I sent a email to all council members asking if they wanted to continue, uh, being the ones that would approve any personnel organizations. I got no real response back, and, uh, since it isn't part of you and city manager to, to appoint people, we had openings in the youth and family services to keep it running, so, uh, I did my job and appointed people who we needed. And there were people that had taken the promotional test, didn't get increases in pay, but got finally got their titles by taking the test, so I did my job.
At this time, we'd like to, uh, recognize our Long Beach Auxiliary Police. We thank you for your presence and we thank all of you for taking the time to come out tonight. Once again, have a wonderful holiday. This concludes our end.
Do I need to clip on this? We keep personally, we continue to show you to get the votes.